So I will call to order the meeting, school committee meeting for Thursday, April 9th, 6:30, remote participation only. It's being taped.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. Welcome to all five members of the school committee. Ms. Rine was taking minutes and is... The way this works, for those that are joining us, the agenda item includes the April 2 days of 2019, 2020 school calendar, the current school year, specifically April vacation that requires a vote of the school committee, and other business on which we have two items to just include it on. So on the first and by the way, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. That is the agenda for Thursday evening. Our agenda...
I'm sorry. Thank you. I got the wrong address. Thank you for telling me that.
You posted one 48 hours ago. I see Terry's eyes going really wide.
Tonight is just the COVID... COVID response and a vote on the agreement for the Administrative Assistance Association.
Yeah, so...
When you said we were voting on AA, I thought it was an intervention.
Which one is the number one on the agenda? Because I don't have it in front of me. I'd have to figure out.
Update on the COVID-19 response.
All right. So, you know, we get the remote going, as you know. In general, a lot of positive feedback, you know, some criticism, which is, you know, expected with such situations that we're in. The high school grading practices has been, come to me, I published it with you folks today as well. You know, it's a working plan, if you will. It's getting a lot of play from other districts, by the way. I shared it with the South Shore superintendent today. We got a number of calls, emails, just saying, you know what? This is the best attempt we've seen yet at trying to do something that is here for kids. And I just want to congratulate the working group, which is the High School Administration Plus 10, along with the academic coordinators and Shannon Taylor from the high school, and just try to figure out a clear way to make sure that we sent the message that this is kind of a working process and flexible, and that we really want to make sure that we don't hurt kids, and that holding kids harmless is a key component, because we don't know what higher education is going to do with any of this in terms of next year's students. And so we're going to be somewhat conservative in our approach and give ourselves flexibility as well. We had 231 meals served today, of which 162 were North Public Schools, 47, that's what we call out of district, which is students not registered with us, live in town, that type of situation. And then we actually had our highest count of seniors, 22 today. So that's a good thing. And then Matt, I don't know if you want to bring up the committee real briefly on the change to food services that's coming in a couple of weeks.
So after another conference call with the state on Friday, we have applied for, and we're going to be running the Seamless Summer Option, which what that allows us to do is we can actually serve seven days a week. Not actually serve seven days, but we can provide meals for seven days a week. So starting on April 20th, we will be going forward, having food picked up five days a week. And on Friday, we'll be providing the students and anyone who comes in with meals that will last for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So we'll be providing breakfast and lunch for seven days a week for every child in town, every child that comes up, plus senior citizens when they come in. The Seamless Summer Option, the SSO, it allows us to submit a reimbursement, which is looking really great. And it's a slight, it's a higher rate than what we'd see during the school year. So this is going to work out pretty well as far as funding, paying, and the actual feeding of the students.
Hey, Matt, can I ask a quick question? So Seamless Summer makes it sound like this is something that will be anticipated or extended to the summer.
Well, what it is, is anytime when we feed during the year, it's called National School Lunch Program. When you are not in school, you have two options you can do. You can feed through the Seamless Summer Option or a summer food service option, which you have to have enrolled in a while back to be part of that program.
All right. So we're just, we're operating under a program that typically happens in the summer, not this day?
Yeah.
So we do this every summer?
No, no, this is new. We've never fed through the summer. It is something that Mike Vaccaro and Chart Wells and I have talked about. We don't know how the participation would be in the summer if we were to run this type of program, but it's something we'll continue to talk about, and we may now have more conversations about that, considering, you know, the situation. Definitely what this does is it allows us to just continue to serve for as long as we're out of school. So if, you know, the decision is made that we won't return to school this year, I don't know if that's going to happen, we can continue to do this through the summertime and still be able to feed students and children.
And Matt, when you said funding is looking good, are we just talking about the funding for the reduced, the free and reduced?
No. The great part about this is that you actually get reimbursement for every child you serve, regardless of...
That's huge for us, then.
That's massive for us, whether it's residents or, you know, one-year-olds, two-year-olds, 18 to 22, they're all, we have it, there's a reimbursable for it. We're still trying to understand the program a little bit more. It's kind of new to us, so we're kind of feeling our way through it now. So we'll find out what the reimbursement rates are going to be. I'm sure there's a lot of schools just jumping on us now.
Yeah.
We're waiting to see what that is. I think last time, last we knew it was about $3.40 per student, so that's pretty considerable.
And that will be reimbursement from the state?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, through the federal government and through the state.
So it won't cover the senior citizens, but it covers people's...
Well, not cover the senior citizens, no.
Which that shouldn't be that big of a deal, I would think.
No, no. I mean, if we're talking, we'll see what happens with the seniors and other potentials. I mean, there's always the possibility, with so many people not working now, you know, they're not going to have money. So we may find that more people in town are hungry, and we are going to figure out a way to feed them if that's necessary. But that'll be a discussion with Mike. We know that DOR has given us a lot of guidance on how we can drive negative at the end of the year, we can spread that over a three-year period to pay it back. So we're getting a lot of options from the state. They're slowly coming around and giving us some adjustments to the rules that are in place to allow us to move forward.
That's great. I know I had asked Joe, but any dialogue that you have regarding this, the food, if we could, when you guys email Mike and James, if you could circle in all Board of Selectmen and the FinCon chair.
Absolutely.
I don't know if they wanted to be involved in any conversations that happened.
Will do.
I have to say, too, they've been great as far as the response for the connections and a lot of other things. Like, I'm happy that our selectmen are involved in our loop now, because I feel like we're getting a lot more support.
Hey, Matt, what's the, roughly, what's the per meal cost?
You know, we're, I think, what do we charge? We charge $3 for an elementary and $3.25 for a high school. So our costs are somewhere around, I think, about $3.10, $3.25. So we're still kind of running in the negative as far as that goes. But like I said, like last year, we were not as far in the negative as the previous sitting year, and this year, well, I don't know, this is a little different now.
So maybe, potentially, at some point, once we kind of see an end in spite or something, you know, I mean, the town's been great, I think, in general. Certainly, it's not beyond the scope of possibility that we kind of come together, and maybe there could even be some donations to kind of cover the costs that we don't get funding from the summer program or something like that. So it's something to think about. I know that, you know, like I said, this town's come together when they really need it to, so, yeah.
Yeah, we've seen that generosity.
Yeah.
Okay. The other update is I sent you a quick email just with Comcast that we, I do have the connections. We have an internal process on how we're going to do it, based on my discussions, which are going to be granted through my office. I'll be the center of contact. So what's happening is our counselors will be, and our staff will be receiving that information via the different ways that we communicate. We'll collect that information, will be by name and by address, and then I'll ship that information in terms of address to Comcast, in terms of whether there's no service or close service, or there's a breakdown in service and all of that. So that's the process that we're going to try to utilize. And we, I had my first back-and-forth email with them today. I'll keep you in the loop as I email them, so that everybody becomes aware of how we're going to try to address it. Right now, the major area that, well, there's two issues. The major area of concern is as you get to the eastern line, there seems, on 123, there seems to be a considerable drop-off in hotspots that are available through third parties. So that's one. Two, I'm very concerned about an area of town where we also have our highest number of potential needs, so I'm going to be pushing Comcast on that. I know that the town in general is running fine, you know, was once again provided that information, that everything's great, but, you know, positively and negatively, I want to make sure, unlike in the community I live in, we have competition. Competition, I think, is a good thing, unfortunately for Norton, or fortunately. You have a major company in town, but it's the only player in town. So I just want to make sure that they recognize that there are certain areas of town where there are going to be families and kids in need, and that there are, you know, there's potential for us to make sure that we have third parties helping to support that, either by political will or by finances. We shouldn't have kids not be able to go online because of the inability of affording $10 a month.
Well, even if you can afford it, I mean, we had to buy those little things that you plug into the house. We couldn't make phone calls, and we had no service at all, even though we were a Comcast internet provider. So it's just, that side of town is just awful.
Right. So that's going to be, we're going to continue to keep an eye on that and kind of just really reach out to our students as we're going forward, asking families for direction. I mean, the best and only way for us to resolve the issue is to get the facts and information, and then try to see if we can work off of it, and then...
If it be a cost associated to Comcast, like if they have to upgrade or do something, who's responsible for that?
Yeah, there's always a cost. I mean, there's either actual manpower costs, you know, sending someone out, or there's the cost of the actual hotspot or connection that needs to be made. And there's not a lot of home connections being made, if you will, just because people who stay out of, excuse me, people's homes. But there's also the potential that, you know, right now, that some of the hotspots that are being purchased through third parties and stuff, everybody's behind. I mean, trying to keep up with that right now is really difficult, but that doesn't mean that we can't get creative. We've already put out our spots that we had, and we currently have none. And, you know, we'll have to just work off of that. There's a potential that we could do some sharing if we had to, that would just probably require a runner of some sort. We'll go that route if we have to, that kind of be a last resort. There's the potential to utilize our transportation system, like some communities have done, and set up a bus with a hotspot, if you will, at the corner of a bus stop, which allows for people to connect via that process. I know a couple of the cities that are doing that. You've got to remember, you've got a lot of districts, just today, one of the local districts is sending out crawl books to students. We've been, you know, we've been full throttle with that since the 6th of March. So, you know, that's, we're in a pretty good state. And, you know, we'll go back to that vote that you folks took on a recommendation going on six years now, which is school choice. If we hadn't done school choice, we would be with nothing, nothing in 3 to 12, nothing, because those classrooms sets, how do you choose who were the 30 kids that are going to get it if there's 90 kids that go through that class? So, you know, we've become, it's been a good thing for us. It's got a lot of equity issues, as you know, that I really struggle with, but, you know, having 97% of kids online in the middle school and over 83% in the elementary school, and these are just at the time that we're choosing to look at it, so it could actually be higher or lower depending on the time of day. We just don't have the time to sit behind a computer and figure out, you know, run the data. So we're just pinpointing data points. They were up again today. That's a good thing. Really, really pleased with the third grade, right? Because that's like our newbies, they take it at home. And fourth and fifth grade, fourth and fifth grade numbers were great, were great, were 80 percentile, high school breaking over 90%. So we know that kids are going on, and they're getting their materials, and then we're also working to try to address those other issues. This is a, it's a kind of like, it's a neutral battle. I mean, you're winning a few, you're losing a couple, you win a few things, you lose a couple here, it is what it is. But really happy with the plan and how it's going. And I did tape a show today, which is actually, will be on Cable Access. It's pretty much just the student remote plan that we put together. I basically read the most important parts of it, you know, what was needed, contact numbers and information. It was, you know, very casual type of thing, so it's nothing earth-shattering, but at least anyone who doesn't have access to that type of digital, they can take a look at their Norton Cable Access and starting as soon as probably tonight or tomorrow, that show will be running pretty regularly.
Great.
I don't know if you want to open it to the public?
Hey, Joe, can I ask a question, actually? And it's going to kind of circle back to the original topic, which was the grading, et cetera. So looking through the thing you sent out to us and trying to understand the whole harmless, so is the theory that where the kids, where the kids were on the day they left school is kind of going to be their bottom stop, and we're going to work towards improvement where it's needed, and if it's not, then it's going to be more of like an educational enrichment type of, type of, as I was...
So, I mean, let me defer to Jen, and then I'll circle back, just because Jen was part of those conversations.
So ultimately, we didn't want a student's grade to decline because we weren't in school right now. And we also know that families are dealing with different situations. You know, Joe touched upon the internet issue. We know that we have a lot of students at the high school that are taking care of younger siblings and helping them with their remote learning while their parents are trying to work. There's a lot of different factors that are in play. So we wanted to make sure that students weren't penalized for being out of school for this extended period of time. So what we decided to do, and this was, you know, a lot of conversation and a lot of, you know, really great points about, you know, making sure that students were held accountable for the work at the same time. So theoretically, there is a rubric in there that shows, you know, what this looks like in terms of grading. Students get no lower than a 59 for a grade, or they'll get, if they don't complete their work, it'll be noted as it was not completed. And so we'll have to kind of, you know, figure that out at the end of the semester. We're hoping that we'll be back, and we'll, you know, just be a short window of time that we have to, you know, factor those pieces in. Ultimately, we wanted it to be an opportunity for students to increase their grades and not be necessarily penalized if they weren't able to get to something.
Did I see?
Yeah, my job.
The other part that's really important is that I want to focus the conversation back to the equity piece. We always have those 10, 15% of students that really struggle with the day-to-day of school, but either they rise at certain parts during the year, sometimes it's the third and fourth term after, or sometimes it's the reverse. It could also be a decline towards the end of the year. And then we also have the students that we want to worry about that are looking for that structure and ability to get a proficient or exemplary grade. So we wanted to focus on how each student could really end up at a point where they normally would be. In other words, an exemplary proficient student is probably an exemplary proficient student for almost all year. All of us who have kids, there's an A, A-, an A-, and maybe a B+ during four terms, but the student in general is an A- type student. You don't see a huge drop. But then we have those other students where motivation, and this was my biggest concern. If you have a student who's currently failing for the year, I don't want them to shut down right now. I want to be able to put some type of a positive carrot. And remember that everything to do with equity doesn't necessarily mean it's equal between me and you. You know, there's a difference, there's a difference with that, that I just think is important, is a focus, because we have students with disabilities, we have students who are ELL, we have students who don't have the online capability right now. All of those, I think, are important, and we need to try to be positive and motivate them in a way that they could still end up doing quite well for the year, because we've changed the model of teaching. The dynamic of high school as a former high school teacher, more so than any time in education, in my opinion, I would argue, is the collaboration, the communication, the relationships that happen within that grade, those grade levels, that are very meaningful towards students' grades, participation in the classroom, and really understanding it. Those types of things are not going to be available to our students.
Right. And I don't have a problem with what we're doing at all, to be clear. I just was trying to get some clarity on what I thought was happening. It does sound like we're kind of using, you know, the block of time when we're going to be out of school, assuming that we go back in at some point. We're going to be using that as a small metric to measure, and it's going to be more of a, again, the environment is educational enrichment with a, with a small emphasis on accountability and what we call grades, but really it's to allow students, again, to kind of, the kids who were maybe behind the ball a little bit, allow them a chance to kind of get caught up, and with the people who are already caught up to kind of continue on the same path they are. Is that a fair assessment?
That's absolutely a fair assessment. And we also just wanted to make sure to put things into place so that we could keep track of students that weren't necessarily participating and doing the assignments, and that's where you see that M down at the bottom of the grid. So, you know, unfortunately, sometimes some kids just have a difficult time handing things in or completing their work, and we wanted to make sure that we were tracking that piece as well. We also had a lot of conversations about, you know, during a day-to-day, on a regular classroom, you're not grading every single time the student participates. So, you know, some of the things that they're going to be asked to do over the course of the week might be more participatory because of the nature of the assignment versus an actual grade in the class. So the teachers are trying to be really thoughtful about where everything they're assigning lies and how that impacts the grades overall.
All right, great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, too, to ask to all of your questions and the rest of the committee members, I think this is a, if you will, fluid document that is probably going to have some tweaking and changes as we go, depending on what happens in the near future with, you know, further closing, closing, close thing of school or actual rest of, remainder of the year. Those will be big impact changes, I think, as we look at all of this stuff. Kathleen, just for the record, if no one else online right now that we can see here is, has anything that we should open it up to the public for any comment under the section we're going to have.
Yep. We do have a hand raised. Hi, Peter, go ahead. Peter, did you have a question? Hold on, I'll unmute you.
You're muted.
Oh, hold on. Or, Peter, you can type it into the chat box if that's easier. You just have to unmute.
Hey.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everybody. How y'all doing?
We're doing.
Doing good. I'm doing a good job washing my hands and putting some hand sanitizer on and staying safe and staying positive, keeping myself busy with a time machine and all sorts of things. Besides, you go walking this nice and in, we're all in this together, and we will work hard, and we'll be back to normal come May, come June, because we're one day closer to Nancy, right, everybody?
Thank you.
Well said, Peter.
Thank you.
Well said. Keep being positive, my friend. Madam Chair, on the second issue, and that is the vote on the Administrative Assistance Association Agreement, and as you can see, it's pretty much failed. Boilerplate that we're utilizing to get there. We have, of course, some flexibility with those positions that's different from the teaching positions, just because their roles are different. But again, we're trying to maintain some, check in some ability, some availability to administrators. So I'm asking that you support it tonight.
Okay, so do we have a motion to support the agreement with the Administrative Assistance Association?
So moved, Dennis Sevass.
Second?
Second, Dan Sheedy.
All those in favor, and I'm assuming it has to be a roll call, so yes, Kathleen Stern.
Dennis Sevass?
Yes, and you can call me Dennis.
Carolyn?
Carolyn Gallagher, yes.
Sherry?
Well, Sherry Cohen, yes.
And Dan?
Dan Sheedy, yes.
Vote is 5-0 for the roll call. Thank you so much. I'll notify them now, and they'll get it, and we can move forward and go in a positive direction. So all I've got for you. Thursday, we announced, and the reason why I didn't do it tonight is simply because I think it's always important for when you're changing your calendar, although I don't think it's going to be very controversial. The fact of the matter is that that'll be, right now, the, pretty much the item to address on Thursday. This way, folks have $48 notice, people can't say, "I didn't know about it, it felt there," and then we'll do all the publications after that, but we'll be discussing the April calendar at Thursday night, 6th Thursday meeting, which is this week.
Okay, so any questions we have about that should come up on Thursday?
Yep. I'll add some data for you as well.
Right, does anybody? Go ahead.
Nope, no other issues.
Does anybody have anything else to add tonight?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. So I know these are kind of unprecedented times, and we're, you know, we're doing our due diligence to have the MOUs and things like that in place. Do we need to, at some point, look at putting this remote learning plan into the handbook in some form, so we have this, you know, going forward if, you know, heaven forbid something like this ever happens again, that we have at least the base work for or the groundwork for it in place?
So your MOUs are, right now, basically have some clarity about that this is not precedent-setting in terms of what we are actually doing with the students, but that doesn't stop you, as the school committee, from putting in some type of a clarity of your expectations when these types of things take place. Again, was it Friday or Saturday with Sherry? She gave me a text message about a local school district was announcing they were closing for the rest of the year. That's really not an authority that superintendents have, per se, or school committees have, unless there's something really unique. It's under the guise of the state of emergency, but yet, you know, the rumor mill and everything's out there. The other part of it is that there's always going to be some clarity that's going to want to be needed or want to be asked by the MTA or the NTA, our local, as it pertains to remote learning, that being something that we do regularly. You know, it's not a replacement for teaching and learning as in the norm, but it won't hurt us to have these potentials, so that when you have a closure for this length, you could already say, "Well, you know what? In Norton, we're moving to remote learning on day one. We just have to reestablish an MOU with offside." That might actually work. On the other side of it, sometimes when the governor announced, or we announced two weeks, and the governor that Friday night announced it's going to be three weeks, and then it became longer, we were all told, "Hey, first three weeks, it's enrichment, academic enrichment and support. It's not for grading, it's not for collecting homework," and all of that. So we switched from academic enrichment, if you will, and experiences, that was the phrase that was used, to remote learning, which still has a lot of academic experiences. So...
So can I have a question about that?
Yeah.
So when it originally happened, though, it seemed like the problem was the equity, and that people weren't really set up to do it in an equitable fashion. So if, to Dan's point, if this was part of our handbook or even like our contract with the NTA, you know, and under this circumstance, we moved to this MOU, MRA that we have, if we were prepared at the time that they first announced the three-week closing, to go to an online learning system that was equitable, and we already gone through them and was equitable, would we have been allowed to at that point? Or was Desi saying, "Nobody can do it at all under any circumstances"?
So what Desi was, what Desi was concerned about was trying to clarify the mandates. How do we make sure that districts who are already online, which a couple of districts were, how do they make sure that they're meeting the needs? How do you provide those specialty services? We're still trying to figure that out today. You know, we're doing some, but we're not meeting the needs of those IEPs, and that was the issue from the state, was don't do anything that is going to be a requirement right now until we understand, are we going to be out longer, and how do we address? And then the Fed's, and what the Fed said, under a lot of pressure from different organizations, was to utilize the idea of equity because of special education and not being able to meet the 100% need of the IEP is wrong. They need, the approach needs to be one that's grounded on trying to do something for all children as much as you can, and then worry off later about, did you meet the IEP requirements at 100% or not? And that became a very... And that became a very much a back and forth between the feds and the state. And that's the reason why you saw al- almost every district say, we're not there. Now, my controversy was, I thought this should have been, A, a state MOU with the Teachers' Association, not one, this, this is a state of emergency. And although in Norton, it's been a model of how we've done this, Teachers' Association, School Committee Superintendent on the same page or administration on the same page, that's not true in every district right now. There's still MOUs that haven't been done. That's number one. Number two, the, the reason why I wanted to state wide is because we are in a state of emergency, so we should have treated everybody the same. And, you know, my article that I plan to publish someday is gonna be the width of the, of the divide between the haves and have-nots just grew even larger. Because we've established that, for example, some W schools that decided that they were gonna publish right away on day one, well, we know that in some of those communities, the lack of online availability is not a problem versus in communities like us, although a small, a small number in comparison to where I live or Matt lives or some of us others live, there's more diversity, there's more economic diversity, there's more need, there's more students on free and reduced lunch, for example. Um, so that there, the likelihood that they have some of the gadgets or the supports aren't really there or, uh, families in need. So I think that the state was trying to send a message. Unfortunately, I think that, that at the same time that they were sending that message, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, um, they weren't willing to, to, uh, to be critical when they needed to be critical and have this done quicker than it was. And again, we were quick, but we could have been quicker. So to your point, Dan, and to, uh, Dinesh's secondary comment, having a plan in the future that is grounded in a, uh, an acceptance that this is what we're gonna do, then yes, and as to your question, we could have said, you know what, we feel we're better prepared to therefore, because of, we've already pre-established most of this, we're going right into, our grading at the high school is gonna look like this, our, our other stuff is gonna look like this, our students are gonna be online on Monday, the sixteenth of March, not, not doing enrichment, but potentially doing required work.
Right. So if, um, unless you can think of a massive downside to this, I think, um, you know, we, we kind of have a free look here with our MOU now, and we can, we can see what works and what doesn't work as we go through this. And then Carolyn and I and yourself, um, when we go back to the table with the NTA, we, I, I think we should think about introducing this as, as an additional part of that contract, say, when this happens, we fall into, into this MOU. It, I, I don't know why they wouldn't be willing to do that, but if you, if you think it's a, a deal breaker, then we can talk about what's on it.
I, it's all about the, it's all about the government declaring a state of emergency, and I'll tell you why. Districts were being allowed, as of last year, allowed to continue into this year, but no new applicants on blizzard bags to make up snow days. The reason why Desi came out against that was the issue of equity. We are, we, as an institution, Desi is recognizing that if we allow for this, we're saying that districts will not be able to meet the needs of all students, and they backed away from that as of the equity issue. So I think that, that the idea of remote or alternative learning, whatever we wanna call it, would probably have to be under the guise in that agreement that we would have to have some type of a X period of days of state of emergency in order to fall into that posture.
Sure, sure. A defined, a defined moment, uh, which we go, yeah, a hundred percent, absolutely.
But at the same time-
Great question, Dan.
We actually have a really good structure that we've come up with and, you know, it's absolutely not perfect, and I think we've learned a lot over the last few weeks, um, about, you know, just how this whole remote learning thing works. We could even consider components of it as part of our crisis plan. Um, because I think, you know, we talked about a state of emergency, you know, we have this crisis manual, it, you know, remote learning could technically come under that category as well.
What is the, the crisis plan, what are some examples of when that would be in effect?
It's simply, um, you know, ways that we deal with certain issues. For example, if you have a bomb threat or if there is the death of a staff member or, you know, a lockdown situation. All of those things are kind of there in their pro- procedures that we go through during those particular situations.
But we still have to ask the commissioner for approval to count those days remotely as days. So it's, a, a better example without, no disrespect to that, because those could be short period times, would be, what would happen if X building had a major fire that closed three-thirds of the building?
Right.
What would we do? And then that's what we, you would say, because we've done remote learning and because we have alternative means around remote learning for those students who don't have, or because, let's say, uh, the budgets are so bad that we can no longer use school choice for remote, for remote devices, we have to go backwards for something else, which I would never recommend, but could happen. The fact of the matter is, we could say to, to the commissioner's office, would you consider this or not? I'll give you an example of, of a day that be, was asked to not be a day counted for makeup, and that was in, uh, the city of Peabody that lost its superintendent, um, you know, right at the beginning of the school year, if you will. And, uh, they shut down the school on the Friday, the commissioner ruled, you're gonna have to make up that day. Um, so as you can see, I think it really requires the governor coming in and saying, this is what we're gonna do. We were deciding to close school for two weeks, recognizing that we may be closing for two weeks and have to make up those ten days. I, it was just, we were making a, a, a health decision, and everybody came in with the three weeks and then it became longer. So, uh, I think this is gonna have a lot of play, though, to both Dan and, and Dinesh's comments. I think this is gonna have a lot of play going forward in terms of, how do we not try to, uh, make up, uh, certain, certain long periods of time when we're away? Um, because maybe we could do it somewhat effectively. Or opposite's gonna happen. Hey, you know what? This just didn't work. Um, yeah, this is not the same. Um, but some people would say, hey, it's, it's better than late June where learning is, learning is difficult in late June, as we know, because of weather and attendance and everything else.
Does anybody have anything else to add? Nope.
You need a roll call to adjourn, you need a motion and then a roll call.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn until, and our next meeting is Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay. So do we have a meeting to adjourn? I mean, a motion to adjourn.
Salute Carolyn Gallagher.